Okay, thank you for your patience. I'm gonna gavel this meeting of the Garner Town Council Regular Business Sessions order. Thank you all for being here this evening and for waiting a few extra minutes for us to get started. We'll begin our meeting this evening with a roll call as we usually do, so I'll call on our town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Okay, thank you councilmen for all being present this evening, sure enough. I'm gonna now call on Mayor Pro Tim Elmo Vance, who will either lead us or have someone lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also in our invocation. Mr. Vance?
Stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe you can...
The mayor council this evening, we have to with us to give us the prayer for to start this session is Ms. Beth Porter. Ms. Beth Porter, she is with the Poole Family YMCA here in Garner, and we ask Ms. Porter to step forward to the podium and provide us with the prayer and afterwards just give us a few things that the YMCA is doing.
Excellent. I invite you all to invite and join me in prayer.
Thank you.
Dear Lord, thank you for an amazing community and a beautiful day today. We have great leaders who are putting Garner in unique and wonderful places. We have members in our community who have needs. We have members in our community who are very generous of their time and are willing to help those in need. Lord, put the wisdom here in this room. Open our hearts to learn, to listen, and to just envelope everything that you have in spirit for us. Today, Lord, is the day that you have given us as a gift. May we do the most with it as we possibly can. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, Ms. Porter, go right ahead and share any significant events that are either going on or coming up with. I know of one, so you can tell us.
So Thursday happens to be the National Day of Prayer, and at the Y, we are having a community prayer breakfast. It is a community-wide event from seven to eight fifteen, and anybody here or in our community is invited to join us. We, I do have a few invitations. If there's anybody who would like one, I'd be happy to give those out. Other things that we have coming up at the Y, we have a program that's actually going on right now. It's called our Food Hub, where we give out food to families in need. They get a frozen chicken, they get a box of fresh produce, as well as diapers. We've collaborated with the North Carolina Diapers, and fresh produce as much as we can outside of that produce box. The other thing we have coming up this month is something called Swim for Life. Swim for Life, these are programs fully funded by our annual campaign, but Swim for Life is for those who do not have the life skill of swimming. We want to make sure if they were to fall into some water, that they knew not only how to survive, but how to get out of that water safely, and if possible, learn how to swim. It is a four-day program, and we have three sessions coming up. Our first one is for loved ones with special needs. It's for our No Limits community, and we're excited to have that. It's May twenty-second through twenty-fifth. And then there's two other sessions that we can accommodate up to eighty people from ages four through seniors to learn that life skill. Those are some of the most things that I find prevalent that are going on through the Y. We have others, but I would say that those are my top three right now. Any questions?
Any questions for Beth? Well, thanks so much. I know you have, you used to have pickleball there sometimes. Some people like to play pickleball. I used to play a little bit.
We do have pickleball. We've added clinics as well. So if anybody needs to learn how to play pickleball, please stop by the front desk of the Y, and we will get you either signed up or get information to you. But the next one will be nine-thirty next Monday morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and sharing that information with us. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Vance, for setting that up. Okay, the next item on our agenda is something we call petitions and comments. It's a section on our agenda when people can come and speak to the council on matters that are not on the agenda, and usually we ask you to sign in or sign up. Ms., town clerk, do we have anybody who signed up this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We did not.
Of course, I usually ask if there's anyone in the audience who came this evening with the express purpose of wanting to make a comment to the council, and so sometimes we'll take a few minutes to do that, even if you didn't sign up. Is there anyone in the audience who is here for that purpose? If you are, would you raise your hand? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will dispense with that. Okay, the next item of business is the adoption of the agenda, and councilmembers, I believe you know by now that under public hearings, item one has been or is being, is being removed from the, from our hearing tonight, so there'll be only the one public hearing, I believe it is. So with that change noted, I would ask you to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it's item two.
Excuse me. You're exactly right. I missed it. Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Okay, with that change noted.
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, in the opposition, there is none. Okay, we're gonna begin tonight with presentations. There is one. Are you aware of what that is? So I'm gonna recognize the town manager, who will make the initial presentation of the budget. Tonight is not a, is not a public hearing on that. We'll have at least one or two more later on, but, and we did have one earlier on, but tonight is for him to bring our attention to the budget itself, him and the budget manager, I guess. Thank you.
Yes, he's gonna assist me in the background, I think. So yes, yes. All right. All right, now we're ready. Okay, mayor and members of the council, I present to you for your review and consideration, the recommended budget for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, and each of you received a copy of that on last Thursday. The budget totals fifty-nine point nine million dollars. It's a thirteen percent increase from the FY23 amended budget. The recommended budget includes a five-and-a-half cent tax increase from the prior year to continue support for our dedicated employees, town infrastructure needs, and thriving community. Though this may seem like a significant increase, we are still very affordable compared to our Wake County peer communities for the municipal cost of services with the annual cost of approximately forty-five, forty-five hundred twenty dollars. And as you can see on the chart on your screen, that Garner is near the bottom for cost, annual household cost. And one thing to remember is that we do not have a separate solid waste fee or stormwater fee like some other communities have. All of those costs are wrapped into our tax rate. So that's one thing to keep in mind when you look at our tax rate and what it yields and what it pays for. I would continue that the Garner is very well managed fiscally, and we have a lot of policies and practices in place, and that's a testament to us continuing our credit rating of AAA by Standard &amp; Poor's and AA two, one by Moody's Investment Services. We are gonna continue to enhance and refine our multi-year model to use as a basis of annual forecasting town needs. We started looking at long-range modeling a few years ago, and as we go on, we will perfect that model to help us make long-range decisions as we go. One thing I would note is the value of a penny is equal to five-hundred-seventy-three thousand ninety-four dollars, and of course, that goes up year after year. The FY24 recommended budget addresses critical workforce and service needs in our growing community and looks to position the town for success in the future. We are adapting to our ever-changing workforce while responding to growth in a time with worldwide market challenges and uncertainty. Our town has grown almost eleven percent over the past year from a population of thirty-one thousand nine-hundred and thirty-five thousand to thirty-five thousand four-hundred and ten, according to our planning department. And I would note that I think we're at about seventeen thousand six hundred when I arrived here in two thousand and one. So it's, it's doubled since I've been here, while also growing outwardly geographically. Yet still, we strive to maintain our hometown charm and character while balancing the challenges associated with growth. We continue to grow our commercial industry as well, with the opening of MD Logistics at Highway seventy, Garner Business Park Seventy, which is located on Highway seventy east, and that will continue to support the biotech industry in our region. We've also had recent significant healthcare-related announcements and events, including Wake Med's plans for integrated whole-person health campus in Garner's E District, and the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs Medical Clinic groundbreaking this spring, which the mayor and I attended a couple of weeks ago. In addition, we will complete the CLUE, which is a character and land use elements update, to the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan in early FY24, and that will be our guide for future development, decisions, policies, and practices. Garner is working diligently to advance projects approved by the 2021 bond referendum. Voters strongly supported the bond program with at or near eighty percent support to improve our streets, sidewalks, and stormwater infrastructure, as well as add new parks and public safety facilities. And as I watched the election returns on that election night, I believe those were some of the highest approval ratings for bonds in the, probably the state, I know in the region. To offset some of the costs, our departments have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to apply for grant funding to leverage our bond funding, and I'm pleased to share that to date, we have been awarded approximately four million dollars in grant funding to be used for the bond program. This spring, we will sell twenty-one point six million dollars in bonds to begin this important work on various projects. And you can see some of the projects located on the, on your presentation, White Oak Roundabout, the Main Street Streetscape, Jurgen Phase One, and White Deer Inclusive Playground and Splash Pad. So as a result, the FY24 budget includes a planned tax increase of two cent to cover new debt associated with the twenty-one, twenty-two one bond program. This takes commitment and strategic planning and decision-making, but most important, it takes a talented and dedicated workforce. Therefore, I propose a budget that seeks to support and maintain our most valuable asset, our employees. In FY23, the town completed a classification and pay study conducted by the Management and Personnel Service Group, otherwise known as the MAPS Group. The study recommends a new pay schedule and position classification list that better aligns with the regional employment market. To continue to maintain a high-quality workforce and to attract new talent, I recommend that Garner invest over three-point-six million dollars annually to fully implement the classification and pay study, which includes Garner Fire and Rescue Employees as well. All employees will see a significant increase to their pay that will be more in line with what their peers earn in neighboring communities. Increases will range from seven to eleven percent. With this, I would add that this is just not a regular pay study like we've done year after year. We're basically gonna implement where we've been behind, but in addition, we're gonna redo our whole merit system and do a complete redesign. So in FY23, oh, okay, I mentioned it. This implementation will attract new talent while rewarding and retaining our current workforce. To fund, fully fund the classification and pay recommendations, I recommend using a combination of the American Rescue Plan and Revenue Savings Plan funding in FY24 to cover vehicle replacement and debt service, and that will create funding capacity for the pay increases. Also recommend pausing merit pay increases until FY24. This is a significant investment in our workforce to continue to stay competitive in the regional market. We will need to redesign the town's performance and merit system and make additional compensation market adjustments in the future budgets, and all of those will become part of our long-range funding strategy and budgeting strategy. I would like to acknowledge and thank Sabrina McDonald, David Beck, Sarah Warren, and Jody Miller for their efforts in leading this important study. Took a lot of time and work, even working with the consultant on that. But compensation is not the only area that we strive to improve. Benefits also play an important role in recruiting and retaining a talented workforce. We have applied for and been approved for participation in the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool for the town's health insurance needs, and we presented that information to you two weeks ago. Participating in this health insurance pool will provide us the opportunity to design our own plans, spread costs from high-cost claims among a larger participant pool, and will assist in managing costs from, in FY24 and beyond. We anticipate our healthcare costs remaining relatively flat for this upcoming fiscal year. The town needs additional positions to help staff keep up with the growing service demands due to community growth. I'm recommending the addition of nine FTEs, which requires a two-cent tax increase. This includes a risk manager position, a HR technician, and an accountant in the finance department to help manage increasing workload associated with employee recruitment, onboarding, and financial management. As we increase our budget and continue to add employees, it is necessary to provide internal resources to build administrative capacity and manage workload. I'm also recommending the addition of a custodial supervisor to Public Works Department. Public, let's see, the addition of this position will allow for dedicated resources to manage the cleanliness and appearance of our existing new facilities and provide greater capacity to maintain and repair buildings. And that's one of the lessons we've learned over the years, is we can't just, you know, build new. We also have to take care of the existing infrastructure that we have. As you are aware, we transitioned to a full-time in-house town attorney in FY21. We continue to see an increasing workload as we acquire new properties and work through legal issues related to capital projects, contracts, and growth. Therefore, I am recommending an additional paralegal position to support the town attorney's efforts and departmental needs. Public safety has always been a top priority for Garner and continues to be one in FY24. I'm recommending an additional four police officers for the Garner Police Department. This includes two lieutenants to fully staff the watch command on the patrol unit and provide appropriate levels of supervision. This also includes two police officers required to meet the service demands within the community, a growing community in population and geographically. We also continue to support the Garner Fire Rescue Department through our partnership with Wake County Fire and Rescue. The FY24 recommended budget not only includes pay increases for Garner Fire Rescue Employees to meet current market demands, but we are supporting the addition of two battalion chiefs through the cost-share agreement with Wake County, which will support the opening of Fire Station Number Five, which is currently being, is under construction on Caddy Road. The FY24 recommended budget also includes a one-and-a-half cent tax increase to fully fund fifteen firefighters and operational costs for Fire Station Five, and that was originally approved as part of the FY23 adopted budget. This time last year, we presented a different picture. We are looking to reduce the town's budget to meet revenue projections. This year, we are recommending an increase to the town's budget of more than ten million dollars over the prior year adopted. This is the first time in my tenure as town manager that a tax increase has been included in the recommended budget. The time is right to make strategic investments now and for the future. I am proud of staff's efforts to find creative and thoughtful strategies to address our needs while responsibly managing a growing tax rate. Though we are proposing to add five-and-a-half cents to the tax rate, staff has worked hard to leverage our American Rescue Plan and Revenue Savings Plan dollars to offset further tax rate increases and to fully fund market rate pay increases for town and Garner Fire Rescue Employees. The council is scheduled to have a budget work session on Thursday, May eleventh, and a second public hearing is scheduled on Tuesday, May sixteenth. In addition, a budget comment portal is available on the town's website for resident feedback and ideas. Thank you for this opportunity to present this recommended budget. I appreciate the diligence of department heads and staff in continuing, in contributing to a balanced budget while addressing service demands. I would like to acknowledge and thank the budget team, which includes Sarah Warren, Ian Johnson, David Beck, Maury Howe, John Hodges, and Jody Miller, for all their efforts and dedication to develop this recommended budget. I look forward to our continued discussions on the budget as we work to support the town's mission of fiscal responsibility, efficient and timely service delivery, orderly growth, and great quality of life. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. You and I discussed this in advance, and I believe the, the intent this evening is to not engage in any significant discussion, but I will give council an opportunity for maybe just a couple of brief comments at this session, and then certainly there'll be ample time to discuss and to dig into this even further. to discuss and to dig into this even further. I would observe it's an ambitious and a challenging budget, and so we will certainly work together to try to, to, to get this passed in an orderly fashion by the, by the time that it needs to be. So counsel, with that, if you will, just a quick go around for any comments you'd care to make for this opening presentation. I'll start with Mr. Vance.
I have no questions at this time, just to echo what the mayor said, this is an ambitious, ambitious budget, something that the town has not seen, and it's going to take, it's going to take some, some thinking when it comes to what we've done before and what we're presenting now, knowing that it is a significant jump from what we've done before, but also realizing that the town has grown significantly and has been significantly behind other municipalities relative to the positions. So although it looks like a lot, but it's really, in my opinion, playing catch-up to where we should have been. So it's going to be a challenging budget to work with.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Dallinger, any comments, maybe?
Yeah, just wanted to thank you all for the hard work, and I know the, heard good things about the new budget process this year. In looking at past budgets, the town's budget has increased by almost fifty percent in the past four years. Our population has not, but will, which kind of shows the trajectory of where we're going. It is an ambitious budget. It's not, I still don't feel it's a growth budget. And will continue to play catch-up with the population probably increasing by fifty percent in the town over the next three years. At some point, the staffing has to catch up to that. I've also already put, we'll talk about it more, and it's not really clear in the budget, but the, the, what's the right word? Diversion of funds for additional funds for Revenue Savings Plan is a concern for long-term viability of our ability to borrow. If this is the budget y'all want, it's the budget you're probably going to get, so thank you.
Sabrina, comments?
Yes, I'd just like to say I appreciate the staff's hard work treading deep waters in new territory. Growth always brings unexpected changes and expenses, and we have to work together to bring about a budget that works for the, the whole town. And I appreciate your hard work and your many hours of dedicated work ethic here.
Thank you. A lot of credit goes to the budget team.
Mr. Singleton?
I want to say I've been doing this a long time, the, the, excuse me, the classification and pay study information is greatly appreciated. We've had it before, but not this much information, not this much detail. To have what other towns, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and Wake County, what other towns and cities and the county are paying through all the positions, the town, I know public safety gets, you know, on TV and in the paper because of the jobs that police and fire do, and well, well noted they should, but there are other employees also that we've got to be competitive with from a salary standpoint and a benefit standpoint. So it's, this information is appreciated, some of it's eye-opening, but it certainly points to justification for looking after employees and for planning to continue to look after, because as, as we know, we just did this three years ago, and the, and it's hard to go from the top quarter down to the bottom quarter in three years. And as I've said many years, all the towns in Wake County, we leapfrog each other, climb up the ladder constantly, passing one another, and that will not stop anytime soon. So I appreciate this information. It's a very valuable tool as we look to discuss this in the next month or so.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, the whole team, for what y'all have done. It's, looking forward to get into it on that Thursday. It's like I was sharing with some folks, similar, I don't remember where you go, you're running, somebody going to know whether it's the food store or whatever, but I was explaining to them, our town is like running a multi-million dollar business. You know, you got to have employees, you got to have good qualified people, you got to pay them. If you don't, they'll go somewhere else. And in Wake County, that is a very competitive market. I was having that discussion with one of our department heads this week, and he said, we've got vacancies, but we can't find the people to come in. It's just such a competitive market out there, and we don't want to lose good people. And we were starting to do that, and thankful we got this pay study done, and we're going to get these salaries done so we can keep those that want to live here and work here. And so that is most important. And the growth with our emergency services, that, that is tremendous, because when it goes down, everyone, everybody wants the blue light and the red light in front of their house when it's happening. And we've got the best in police and fire and rescue, and they do a fabulous job, and we want to maintain that and the quality of employees within those individual departments. I, I know it's a little expensive, but I pay taxes like everybody else, and, and so we try to be good stewards of the money up here on this board. I know we do, and the staff does, and try to make, it's amazing what one penny would generate in, in taxes, but we try to be good stewards of it and keep your trust out there. So for those who are sitting at home, don't panic, we, we'll get through this, it's just a sign of the times. But I would thank everybody and all of our employees for what they do and putting this thing together, and I think we're going to move forward. Talking about hospitals, being a veteran, we got that Veterans Hospital coming together on 50th South, if you hadn't been out there. We've got Wake Med, what was going to be a 50-bed facility, now it's going to be 150-plus 50s, it's going to be like 200 beds out here at White Oak, a major hospital, then Duke Medical Facilities, and who would have thought 10 years ago, all this would be coming to Garner, and there's probably more coming. So we're all in for a big ride, but I hope it's going to be a good one. So thank again for what you do, and that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Thank you, counsel. And so we'll continue this and look forward to further discussions, particularly at our next regular, well, our next budget schedule meeting.
Yes, May the 11th, we have our budget, all-day budget work session, and yes, so thank you very much. I would just say that this budget is an indication of how far we were behind in several areas and how much the world has changed in three years. I mean, just dramatically in three years, and then with the growth that we have coming. So we look forward to going through this with you in, in next week, actually.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, we will proceed to our next item, and that is, excuse me, the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. Counsel, what say you regarding approval of this agenda?
Move that we receive the consent agenda?
Okay. Okay, motion properly made, and consecutive. Thank you very much. Unless there's any discussion, I'll call for a vote. If you approve the consent agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, no? Okay, it is approved. Thank you very much. All right, we're going now to the item on the agenda under public hearings, and as I misquoted before, we, we still have item number one as a public hearing item. In fact, that's a quasi-judicial hearing. So as we consider that as our first public hearing, I will ask you, if you're here this evening to give testimony in this particular, this is special use permit, SUP SP 2209, I would ask you to go back and see our town clerk and be sworn for, for your testimony. And while you're going, I will read a, an explanation regarding the quasi-judicial hearing, so feel free to go back at this time. Okay, quasi-judicial hearing understates all the parties are entitled to a fair hearing and an impartial decision maker. So I must ask the council members, do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to this hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any ex parte communications, or have you had any close, do you have any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome? If so, would you indicate that at this time? Okay, thank you. All right, this is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of this hearing. And so the town clerk is in the process of completing the swearing-in of our witnesses, and as soon as that is completed, we will, let's see, who is presenting this for us? I think it's, what's her name, isn't it? Okay, I'm going to now formally open the public hearing, and we will begin with the town's presentation this evening, and I will recognize Ms. Allison Jones.
Good evening. Waiting for me to get everything together. I'm here to present Garner Five US 7 Industrial Special Use Permit, SGP SP 2209. The applicant owner and owners, Allenir LLC. The tract is located at 4839 Green Garden Road, and it's approximately 57.1 acres. They're requesting to establish a 225,000-square-foot warehouse and office building, or we call it flex space too, as well. The current zoning is heavy industrial, it's conditional, zoning 257. Just wanted to remind you, this parcel was rezoned, and the rezoning was approved, I'm going to say November of last year. So this is the same site that has come out before you this time around with the actual building for it. It's in the limited highway, excuse me, limited access highway overlay district. The setbacks are 50 feet for the front and rear, 25 for the side, and 35 for the corner. Neighborhood meeting, staff identified 76 properties within the notification radius, and they were mailed the notices. The neighborhood meeting was held at the temporary job site trailer at 1,000 Garner Business Park at 5:30 on June 28, excuse me, and three people were in attendance. And here is the overall picture of the site. This is the building that we are talking about tonight, and these are the other buildings that have already been built in this industrial park. And here is the building elevations. The building will be constructed of concrete panels, decorative brick, and aluminum storefront. I'm sorry. The open space, land, parkland, open space are not required. This is a non-residential project. The landscaping buffers, the tree coverage, they're required to have 12% tree coverage. They are preserving 49.2, 28, excuse me, a tree coverage, and they will also be having additional landscaping as well. The street and perimeter buffers are 15 feet, and there's a 50-foot buffer along the NC 540 that will be coming this way some years down the road. Lighting meets the requirements of the UDO, and all the light fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white light exhibiting color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking for the warehouse is based on one space per 5,000 square feet. A floor area and parking for the office is one space for 300 square feet. They're required to have 113 spaces, and they are proposing 116. The inspections department, along with the fire department, has reviewed and proved the plan as proposed. Environmental and flood plain, there are new sort of buffers areas do exist along with wetlands. If the development does occur in these areas, the appropriate state or federal agency would have to provide a permit or approval for them to disturb those buffers prior to issuing building permits. The stormwater management, Garner Five is a commercial development that's not located within the watershed protection area, but it is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen as well as quantity requirements for the one-tier, one, excuse me, 10 and 25-year storm events. This development is proposing a one-retention pond to treat the impervious surface for the site. The wet pond shall satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements as the site for the nitrogen and will detain 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. A nitrogen payment will be also required for this development. The site will be served by the City of Raleigh's Public Water and Sewer Systems. And just to point this out, I was, the 540, this is where it will go right in this area. Roads and sidewalks, the Garner Five US 7 Industrial will be accessed off the cul-de-sac of Garner Business Park Drive, a public street constructed with the previous US 70 industrial developments. This street is already built to the ultimate section, and there are no additional traffic-generated improvements required for this development. After review and revisions, staff finds this plan approvable with the specific project conditions, which are prior to the issuance of building permits, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid at town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the Garner Engineering Department shall be in receipt of the documentation that nitrogen offset payment has been made to approve a mitigation bank. Comprised to construction draw and approval, a final plat or recombination shall be recorded with the Wake County Reserve deeds. Prior to the issuance of building permit, documentation of underground telephone line has been removed by the government authority. Prior to the issuance of building permit, tree survey must be received and proved by the planning department to confirm the preservation of tree requirements. And finally, the prior to the issuance of building permit, the annexation request must be submitted to the planning department. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'm here. I do believe someone from the, well, I know someone's from the advocates here, if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, and yeah, we'll give counsel an opportunity, then we'll hear from the applicant. I'll start to my left with Mr. Matthews.
No questions, sir.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Nothing right now.
Okay, Ms. Dallinger?
Yeah, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Dallinger? Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
No questions.
Okay, and Mr. Vance.
One question, it may not, you may not be able to answer this, but I noticed that with the, on the site plan, I-5, I-540 is in close proximity to this proposal here. Do you have an idea about the timeline of when I-540 is coming through? If you don't, that's, I'll, okay.
Good evening, everyone. Daniel Gunter with Al Nayar, the applicant. We've received varying estimates of 540, as I'm sure some of you have. We're told now completion may be 2028. So, starting next year, right away acquisition and then getting the contract out for bid. But that's subject to change, but that's what we've been told.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, this man.
Okay, yes. All right, everybody good? So, we will now hear from who is representing the applicant or persons here, okay?
Daniel Gunter again. I've learned that if my voice may not need to be heard, no need for it to be heard, but I'm happy to respond to any questions you all have. I want to give my compliments to the, to the staff for working through this with us. It was a difficult site. I think this is going to be an excellent project to continue on with the other four buildings that we've developed in the business park and the partnership with, with the town, the staff, and you all has been outstanding. So we think it's another good project. But any questions that I can answer from you all, I'm happy to do so.
Okay. Hold there and we'll see.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I'll start with Ms. Behringer this time.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, go back and forth.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
No questions.
And Mr. Matthews.
No questions.
All right. And Ms. Vance.
I have no questions.
All right. Well, okay, I don't know if they have a question, but just a quick comment. I'm not poking fun here, but I've been in a number of meetings with Campo and a lot of others and it seems like a moving target as to when that 540 is going to be completed out there. But I think, I believe you said 28?
Yes, sir.
I believe that's the last date that I heard. So, we'll see if that moves any. Okay, I guess there are no other questions for this individual. Are there others from the applicant who plans to testify or be available? Do you know?
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right. Nothing else from the town, is that correct, Ms. Jones? Okay, council, the issue is before you. If you desire to have some discussion before a motion, a motion will soon be in order for sure. Any observations?
Mr. Mayor, can you just confirm that there's no members of the public here?
Oh, excuse me.
And close the public hearing?
Thank you so much. I didn't mean to leave anybody. Yeah, if, this is a public hearing and so if you came this evening desiring to speak on this particular item, would you let it be known at this time? Okay, I guess there are none. So thank you very much. All right, we'll go back to the point of a, of a motion or any discussion council wants to have before the motion is made. Oh yeah, you're right. Okay, I'll get it right after a while. I'm gonna formally close the public hearing, all right? And now we'll turn it over to council for further, further action discussions, but a motion is in order.
Mayor, I find application number SGP SP 2209 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2.D. Therefore, I move the town council approve SUP-SP-2209 Garner Five US 70 Industrial with the six specific site conditions to be listed on the permit that were prepared by the staff.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. And second by, Councilmember Behringer, if there's no other discussion, I'll call on the council to vote. So you have the motion before you. If you approve the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, would you vote no? Okay, the motion is approved and is so ordered. I thank the applicant and the work you did on this and had the privilege of going to ribbon cutting, I guess, is it the building next door, I believe? So that's an active park out there. So, I wish you well as that, as that moves forward. Thank you very much. So, that concludes then, public hearings for the evening. We will now move to new and old business. I don't believe I have any on the agenda. Is there any? Anybody know?
No additions from staff.
Okay, all right, none. Okay, thank you. All right.
I'm assuming that these residents are here for the, what was going to be item number two. And I'm, I'm assuming someone told them that it had been pulled from the agenda and there's not a date, specific date when that'll be coming back before us. Is that correct?
We were told that, although we were also told that, I believe that Evans is here to do some, that's why we decided.
Well...
That may have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would say that may have been, just in case the council had any questions or comments about them continuing to a later date, they were just prepared to be here to speak on that if they needed to. But there were not any.
Okay, so...
Just to support their request to move it to another date.
Let me ask a specific question in later date, and I noticed we got this indefinite postponement. So indefinite means we don't know and we're assuming it won't be two weeks from now, which is the 16th. That's, that's confirmed, it won't be that, okay. I just, we just need to make sure these things...
Can we get a confirmation on that?
Yes, they said it will not be the 16th.
Okay.
It would have to, because it's not being continued to a specific date and time, it would have to go through the public notice process again, so that would be mailed notice as well as posting it on the website.
Just want to make sure these folks get notified.
Mr. Mayor, so here, I'm curious for the reason for the request since they're here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Hallman and I am the project planner on the case. So my address for the record is 621 Hillsborough, Suite 500 in Raleigh. I do not, I am not part of the developer team. I was, I received a phone call this morning requesting that this item be, that I contact the planning department and request the delay, so I can't speak specifically to the S to Y.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, you folks are informed now regarding why we're not having the hearing tonight and you'll certainly be notified when that is rescheduled by proper notice. And we did send out a notice this afternoon when we confirmed that it was not going to be held and some of you may have missed that, but we regret that. But we sent it out as soon as we could once the, the action was taken, all right? So we'll, we'll see you at that future date when it is set again, all right? Thank you all. Appreciate your patience in being here. We won't make you stick around for the rest of our business tonight, that's fine. Thank you. All right. New and old business. We'll move then right on to committee reports, if there are any.
Yeah, yes, sir. From the HR committee, we have started to, in the process of preparing for interviews in, in this month. And the interviews will be for the various vacancies on the commissions and the boards.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And I guess I should mention, as of last year, the annual awarding of the Stevens Service Award was turned over to the town. We set up the committee for last year and indicated we would take a look at that. And so we will be getting some information out on that pretty soon and I'll be talking to at least some members of council about serving on that committee as we move ahead with that. And I'm thinking our deadline on, on that is, or the time in which we expect to have a person selected is, the town clerk is busy right now, but I think it's over in August maybe. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, that's just a brief committee report here. All right, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours for the manager's report.
Mayor and town council just mentioned some of the activities that are coming up in Garner events. On Saturday, May 6th, the Garner Fire Rescue and the American Red Cross will be teaming up with community partners and individual volunteers for the Red Cross Sound the Alarm event. With that, organizers hope to have teams fan out and install 250 smoke alarms in the community. For more information, you can contact Captain Don Johnson with the Garner Fire Rescue and his email address is djohnson@ganrefire.com. Also, Friday Night Flick starts its season and that's part of our Garner Parks and Recreation Cultural Resources Department event. It starts on May 12th at 8:30 PM on the lawn of Garner Rec Center, Recreation Center. The movie will be Thor, Love and Thunder. The duo of Larry and Joe play at Garner's Performing Arts Center on Saturday, May 13th. Larry and Joe offer a fusion of Venezuelan and Appalachian folk music. And this is a pay what you can event and starts at 1:00 PM with a workshop on traditional Venezuelan music. The next Downtown Night Market is Thursday, May 18th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the manager regarding his report? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Attorney, recognize you at this time.
I'm coming to the podium because I actually have added another item that I'll pull up. But with consideration of the budget presentation tonight, it's my duty to remind you of the Transparency Act, which went into effect last year, which has to do with any appropriations to nonprofit entities. State law now restricts you from voting on any of those appropriations, whether they be the form of a grant or a loan or other contractual services, if you are affiliated with that nonprofit as an officer or director. This excludes the nonprofits created by the state or by the town, which would be the Garner Economic Development Corporation and the Downtown Garner Association, which are not affiliated with the town directly anymore, but they were creations of the town. So as you're considering the budget, you'll need to disclose whether you are an officer or director of those. And as we go through the process, we'll provide you with more detail of, of those organizations.
Good.
So that's, item number one is just a reminder. The second item I wanted to make you aware of is House Bill 409 entitled, "The Regulation of Accessory Dwelling Units." And you may be aware that the North Carolina League of Municipalities has asked local officials to reach out to their senators about this. This is a bill that has passed the House almost unanimously by a very large margin and is now in the Senate for consideration. But with the assistance of your planning director, Jeff Trezenberg, who's made an analysis of what the bill would allow and what the Garner UDO would allow, I've prepared this position paper, so if you have a consensus or like to make a vote on it, whether you wish to lobby this and instruct your town lobbyist, Sam Bridges, to also lobby on this behalf. But just quickly, this is a comparison. So, right now, the UDO that was adopted last summer does allow for accessory dwelling units in your residential zoning districts with some additional acreage required in the R2 and R4. Under the state bill, there would be no additional acreage required. Some of us in the legal community call this the double the density type bill because potentially if you can meet the setback restrictions, you can put another dwelling unit on almost any recorded lot, any recorded residential lot within the town limits. Interestingly, although it's called accessory dwelling units, the state law doesn't necessarily require you to already have a dwelling unit on that lot. Under the town's UDO, it could not be higher than the principal dwelling unit unless it's the upper story, an upper story type attic type unit. Under state law, it would only be the maximum in that zoning district. So you might have a ranch-style house and you could have a taller accessory dwelling unit potentially in front of it. Again, the town limits the size of these accessory dwelling units so that they are accessory to a principal dwelling unit, to be 50% of what's already there or 800 square feet, whichever is less. The state bill does not have a size limit other than, basically it has to be smaller, so as much as one foot smaller would be sufficient under that. The building setbacks would be the regular setbacks in the town's UDO. It is 10 feet or the zoning district, whatever's less, under the state option. Again, the accessory dwelling unit is intended to be, under the town ordinance, part of that lot so that you would not be subdividing, you would not be able to sell these separately. They would go with the ownership of the property. State law, or the state bill would not prohibit that. The town would require additional off-street parking to accommodate the additional load that another dwelling unit would provide. State law would not provide or require any additional parking. The town Unified Development Ordinance would require you to use the existing driveway. Under the state bill, potentially they could build a second driveway from that lot. And then, again, both the town's ordinance and state law would require, you know, water and sewer where necessary and require there to be a permanent foundation. Some of the bill's sponsors have said that you can have restrictive covenants that would prohibit accessory dwelling units in certain subdivisions and that historic districts could restrict them. However, many of the older neighborhoods and typically Garner does not have designated historic districts under state law. So these neighborhoods would not have an opportunity to restrict them unless they could somehow get together and adopt new restrictive covenants. So again, the league has asked for you as elected officials to reach out to our senators. And so what I'm looking for tonight is if you do feel that the town should take a position, we would provide this position paper to you to use and also to the town's lobbyists to use in lobbying efforts. And also to share it with the league as they've asked for information about different jurisdictions and how they currently regulate accessory dwelling units.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Jones on this matter and then I'd like for council to indicate its wishes as relates to this issue. So, Mr. Matthews, you have any questions?
No questions, but I certainly agree that we need to look at this thing and it's like, where anything's acceptable, where we've got, with our UDO, we've got a good governance of growth and I would support getting our lobbyists involved on this thing.
Okay, okay. Ms. Singleton?
I agree with that, but I'm afraid this ship has already sailed.
Ms. Behringer?
Just let me clarify, if a House Bill 409 passes, let's see, to get it straight, we could still have accessory dwelling units if we do not support that bill, is that correct?
No, we, and I can pull up the actual bill language. We would be essentially preempted at that point. The way the bill is structured, it says, "The local government shall allow the development of at least one accessory dwelling unit." Now, it does have to meet the fire prevention in any area zoned for residential use that allows for the development of single-family detached dwellings. So, once this bill passes, you no longer have the ability to separately regulate them.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
A question on the items where it says does not prohibit, does that mean it's not addressed and therefore not prohibited? Or, and so, I think there were a couple of items. Or, and so, I think there were a couple of items.
So, in the table?
Yeah.
So, basically, so the town's ordinance has, for instance, the prohibition that you can try to sell it separately. The bill does not contain that similar type of restriction. So, someone, in theory, could sell the secondary building, the accessory dwelling, separate from the lot. They...
How does that work? I mean...
I mean, maybe you condo your two things. I don't think that has been completely vetted through exactly how you would do that. I mean, there were places where you would have a, you could have a building, but you had a ground lease, so you didn't own the property underneath. It probably would be something like that if someone was interested in buying a building without the lot. That may then create some taxing issues, and who's responsible for the taxes?
Is it real property, or is it not real property? Right? Like, if that, that's so...
And that's one of the reasons with accessory dwellings, is that if you wanted to, you would have to subdivide the lot, and you would have to meet the subdivision standards of the lot sizes and all of the other regulations under the town system. So, if you want the accessory dwelling unit, it has to stay with that lot and that primary dwelling. But yeah, so, if you see in the subsection B, these are the prohibitions. The local government can't require owner occupancy, can't require it to be part of a conditional zoning district, can't establish minimum parking, can't prohibit connection to utilities, provided there's capacity in the system, and can't charge fees, you know, that would be different than for a single-family dwelling.
I mean, it's kind of weird. Like, if you subdivide it, then you have a lot that needs to meet the town's standards, right?
Well, if you were to subdivide it, then it would be like you would have a regular single-family dwelling on each of the lots, but you'd have to meet all of the subdivision standards.
It'd make one wonder. It'd make one wonder, you know, if it's an established neighborhood, a new neighborhood, you got a covenant, you got an HOA, and that's already established. Does this override that? How does that fall in the big scheme of things?
It does say that this new law would not impact the validity or enforceability of private covenants. Now, that would be covenants that existed beforehand, and they might not specifically talk about accessory dwelling units. So, yes, in theory, if you had, if you already had a covenant prohibiting you from building another dwelling unit, most, I guess, most HOAs, they would regulate whether you were putting an addition on or something like that. So, they could regulate it in that way. But there are neighborhoods that no longer have covenants, or their covenants have expired.
So, if you built something, and then wanted to subdivide it, even if you wanted to subdivide it, and let's say it has no parking, right, because it doesn't require, what would, can we allow a subdivision of a lot with a house on it that doesn't have parking that meets our UDO standard?
We would typically not allow a subdivision that would create a non-conforming situation.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, although we have some infill lots that might not meet dimensional requirements, and generally, you would allow at least one dwelling unit on that lot, so that it would not be a regulatory-type taking, this would essentially say you could potentially have two lots, I mean, two dwellings on that particular lot.
Ms. Vance, anything?
No questions.
Okay. Just sounds to me like the state legislature are trying to get into areas with towns that they shouldn't. That's my one person's opinion.
This is a way of forcing that, my favorite phrase, "The missing middle," to happen. That's basically what they're going to do, is forcing it to happen. And I'm trying to sit here and figure out, well, you know, if you're going to build two houses on the lot, and then what you're doing to you is you're also specifically targeting older neighborhoods. The new ones have the HOAs, and it mentions historic properties can't have it, but you're once again targeting historic, excuse me, I'm sorry, older neighborhoods, like right over here at Forest Hills, and many more in Garner, to do this. And so, you're force-feeding the missing middle. And again, I'm trying to figure out if it's not subdivided, that how it's going to, how property taxes are going to be done, who's going to own it? I mean, there's, this is one of those, be careful what you ask for, because you just might get it, and it's going to create a few issues, and somewhere along the line there to go back, "Well, we didn't think about that, we didn't think about that," when how can we sit here and think about it, and they can't? Again, there's, this needs to be run through a filter several times to clean up some of those questions specifically, or, well, there's a lot of them, but I'm just sitting here thinking, okay, you're going to put another house in a building, so if it's one foot less, basically, you know, and it's going to be newer construction, that house might be worth more than the one sitting there, because if it's in an older neighborhood. But there's nothing prohibiting what, it can be built, I mean, what, there are no standards of what the construction has to be, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Just what?
Just building code.
Just building code.
So, right. They would have to meet the building and the fire code, but architectural type, not that you can regulate, although there can, you have conditional districts where they have some architectural. But in theory, this, they could put another dwelling unit in the front yard, essentially.
And in theory, they could tear down a house and build two houses. An accessory dwelling unit may be built on-site at any time before, concurrently, or after the primary single-family detached dwelling has been constructed or sighted. They go in here in Forest Hills and just tear down houses, and pop two houses and call it an accessory building.
You got, another neighborhood in Garner, Greenbrier being one, brick homes, many of them are ranch, not all of them, all brick, so you can go in there and tear it down and build out of whatever they want it made out of. So, the quality of the housing may not match what currently exists there.
Is this already out of committee? I mean...
So, yes, this has made it out of the house. It passed the house, again, by 106 to 7 vote. So, that's overwhelming. And then, it is now in the Senate. So, the ask from the league is for you to contact the senators. And if you concur, I'll give you this position paper and the email addresses, so you can communicate directly with them. I can get that information to you tomorrow.
And concurrently with that, we'd be in touch with our lobbyists to advise them of our position on the matter.
And I would also give this information to the league, so that they can use it in their broader effort. Not all jurisdictions allow accessory dwelling units, but quite a few do, under similar regulations to what the town of Garner has.
It was already passed the Senate on the first reading.
Yes, but it has to go to the third.
Yes.
And it's basically, it's in committee, it's in rules, it will probably go to another committee in the Senate.
Okay. I don't know how Senator Blue stands on this, but we have to talk to him. Okay. Any other questions for the attorney? And then, council, we need to give our stated position on the matter. I think I know what it is. But any other questions for Ms. Jones? Anybody? Okay. So, what say you in regards to the council's, this town's position, in opposition to the bill?
Absolutely.
Okay. We need to take a formal vote? We can do a thumbs up?
You gave me a thumbs up.
Okay. All right. I believe it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Council reports. I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
I have a question. I got up here tonight and had a letter from Mr. Penny. It was in regards to the rezoning, the 401 project that has been continued. Did everyone else get one? It was addressed to Mr. Vanford, and it's copied to Mr. Trezenberg, the mayor, and to me. I know for real Scotland, because I'd like to get it. I'd like, if somebody, if we can copy this, I can give it to them, and also give it to Ms. Gibson, because his concerns about flooding from the project onto his property are, they seem somewhat valid to me. But I don't know. I'm not an engineer, and I don't design subdivisions.
I remember getting that. I meant to bring it with me.
I'll see if we can get that sent out via email. Okay. If y'all will send out the rest of the council, I'd appreciate it. Okay.
Has our town engineer seen that? Didn't go to...
Her name, it wasn't copied to her, but I feel sure that she'll get a copy.
Okay.
Mr. Trezenberg, Mr. Vanford nodding yes. I just want to make sure that they get sense of the council, and to the appropriate staff members, so we're all reading Mr. Penny's concerns.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have for right now.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, sir. A couple of things. I had the privilege of going to the open house yesterday at the Banks' house. It's been refurbished, and it's going to be an Airbnb at the corner of Jones', excuse me, Garner Road and Creeds Road. I've watched that house over the years, looking at it and saying, "It could be, it could be, it could be." Well, now it is, and it's really, really a nice addition to the community. I think that we're going to, we'll really be glad and appreciate that that's being, has been redeveloped.
Is there a difference in terminology there? I guess, I understood it would be a bed and breakfast.
It is. Airbnb is what I understood. Well, maybe bed and breakfast, maybe I'm saying it wrong.
Is it the same?
I have no idea.
I always thought a bed and breakfast was something where, you know, the owners stay there and they do things.
Airbnb is where you rent the whole house for a given month or whatever, if you're in town. It's plain bed and breakfast.
I was saying it wrong.
Multiple people can be in bed and breakfast.
I think this was...
But at any rate, it is...
It's a lovely house.
It's a lovely house. They've worked really hard on it, and it's a pleasure to have it in the neighborhood. There are two properties at the corner of Jones Sausage Road and East Garner Road that need mowing terribly, so here I am again. If you could have them look at it, that's in our town limits, and I think one of those properties is maybe not even occupied, but it's in terrible shape. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Mr. Dillinger?
Nothing to say.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
Yes. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to the North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Annual Conference in Concord on April 26th and 27th. It was a very good conference to get together with the other municipalities within the state, and to find out their having similar challenges that we're having here with growth, affordable housing, keeping town and municipal employees, revitalization and repurposing historical buildings. It was good to, just to hear some of the ideas that were being provided there. And I would recommend that the council has the opportunity, having been, at least go to at least one, just to see and be a part of that activity. Next thing is, is it possible to get an update on the Polte Development Agreement, where it, we're talking about the development of White Oak Road and delighted Bryan Road? Just to see the status of where we are on that, if it's possible to do that. And last, I'd like to say kudos to the town on the rapid response of taking care of areas that were, had graffiti on the buildings. They quickly jumped on those and took care of it. I really appreciate that from a personal standpoint, and the town response to that particular problem. And so, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Phil, did I give you a chance?
Yes, sir. From the Veterans Advisory Committee, we do have Memorial Day coming up this month, and we've got to, going to have quite an event out there. And Mr. Tim Stevens is going to be our keynote speaker, which we're glad to have him. And also, Mr. Vance, Ms. Dillinger, I'll have you, if all goes well with my meeting with the clerk tomorrow, we'll have three good names to go to the Veterans Committee to bring us up to 100%. Two being veterans, and one not being a veteran. We're very pleased, hopefully, and just make sure his packet's in, and I think the other two are in. So, we'll have you those three names, and we'll move forward.
Okay. Okay.
I left out one thing. I need to ask to be excused from the work session. At the end of May, I will be out of town.
No.
I'd ask you.
You've heard the request. I guess we don't necessarily have to vote on it tonight, but you remember that that request was made, for the work session you said.
The work session.
Okay. Okay. And just from the mayor's perspective, I would echo Ms. Behringer's comments about the Banks' B&amp;B. It's a nice addition to our town. I believe it's the only bed and breakfast we have in Garner. I think that's what I heard. Yeah, so, or the first one. Also, I know that there was some, a little bit of information circulated, and I haven't met this gentleman, but I think we'd have a strong interest in inviting, I believe it was a Mr. Henning, who is the Wake County Teacher of the Year, and see if we can connect with him, and bring him in, and recognize him here before this council, I think, or if you would like to do that, right?
My son had him and spoke highly of him, and my daughter interacted with him. Also, she didn't have his class, but she interacted with him over her time there, and also spoke very highly of him. So, I think it'd be nice to honor him as the Wake County Teacher of the Year, and also recognize us all teachers here, not only in Garner, but in Wake County. And with your wife being a retired educator, I know that's close to y'all.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sure enough. And one other person I'd like to recognize, maybe you can do it later on too, but the annual Relay for Life was held this past Saturday. This was the 26th annual occasion of that event, and guess who was the organizer and has remained the chair of that for 26 years? Ms. Jill Gunnigan.
I remember the very first one, the football field at Garner.
That's quite a record of service, I think, sure enough. It's impressive. So, if you get a chance to see her, and Jill, if you're listening, we're proud of you, and thank you for all that you've done. She is still, I believe, a teacher over at the high school. Does that sound right?
I'd say another well-loved and respected teacher at Garner High School.
Yeah, okay. All right. With that, that's all I have. So, anything else for the good? Let's see, Mr. Manager, do you have anything, or Assistant Managers, either one?
I don't have anything further.
Okay, all right. So, all right, well, I'm going to declare an adjournment here then, and we'll just wrap this thing up, okay? Declare this meeting of the Garner Town Council adjourned until the next meeting schedule. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
We really appreciate all you do.